I have seven o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Drier.
Present.
Counselor Irvin. Counselor Fleck. Counselor Merritt.
Here.
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Counselor Stennett.
Here.
Mayor Solzby.
Here. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to declare the United States of America, a sovereign republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Items to be added to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Anyone want to add?
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. As we discussed on Friday, we'd like to add a item to the agenda. Our request to negotiate the approved sale price of real property. And I'd suggest that we add that under Business from the City Manager, maybe make that Item A and Report from the City Manager, Item B.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Appearance of Interested Citizens. This is a time for citizen comments. The council will first take comments addressing items not listed to on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. The council will then throughout my glasses, the council will then take comments addressing action items on the agenda. Thank you, Mike. That's better. The council will then take comments addressing action items on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer providing their name, identify whether they are city resident, and if so, their ward. Please limit comments to three minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only during that hearing. The council will not be making any decisions based on the public comment. However, staff and council may choose to ask questions to comment or comment following the conclusion of citizen comments. Items not on the agenda. We have Bruce Kausch.
Yes, thank you very much. I have two comments, well, actually, three. First one is in regards to requiring, at least it used to be the address of each person that speaks. Now I see it's been changed. If that protocol has changed, it'd be good to change that in all things, including the form in which I filled out to speak. Second thing is, I watched the Pride Proclamation activities at last meeting, and I was perturbed and finally disturbed by that. And as I analyze it, this is how my analysis goes. That the mayor undercut the authority of the council as a whole by not going ahead and doing what the roles and rules and roles and responsibilities of the mayorship should be. Mayors are supposed to read the proclamation that the council has fully approved. And so I think that was something that undercut the authority of the council as a whole and diminished the role of the mayor. And I'm sorry that that happened. The it's my understanding that the last, when the early budget committee meetings, the comment was made, why do we need a library when we all have mobile phones and access to the internet? And that indicates to me, as someone who's connected to friends of library, that a whole lot more education needs to take place on the part of the council to learn exactly what the role of the library is in our community and how much it gets used. I think it'd be who of the council and maybe the city manager to provide monthly or frequent reports from the library about its usage, its purpose, and many things that it does for our community. In many communities, the library is a point of pride. And when people are looking for a place to retire, they often check out the library. And so I think there's a lot to be discussed. It could go on for quite a long time about the importance of libraries. But I think at the short term, it would be a good approach for the council to get a lot more information about our current library. The other piece of that quickly is that if you look back at some history here, the position there during COVID, the library was closed, people were laid off, positions were consolidated, and the head librarianship and the directorship were shrunk into one position which the head librarian now holds. And so there is a pretty major cut as a result going through COVID and the restructuring. That's sort of, that's some, something to consideration as you look at the library and its budget. So thank you very much for your time.
Leah Cooper.
Live in Ward Two. It's pretty rough living right there. I don't know what we're, the plan is moving forward. I know that we, that you guys have talked to, talked about moving them over by the waste treatment plant, which would be good, but we still need to address the issue of the effects that those camps have on our city. I mean, they're pooping in fitting rooms. I mean, this is horrible. I can show you a video that I got just the other night of them welding and grinding on metal at ten PM at night. Anybody wanna watch that? It's great. That happens like every night. It's it's rough. I don't even know where to start, but this is the video I have here. So you guys can get the full effect. That's at ten o'clock at night. And that's before they got out their chainsaw. When the sun goes down, it gets crazy. I hear them over there screaming obscenities. They harass my dogs. It's it's very frustrating. And I just think that we need to start addressing it. We need to start maybe arresting people when the cops come. I haven't seen anybody arrested. Just had the paramedics there three times in a twenty-four hour period about two weeks ago. I just want you guys to know where I stand, I guess, and a lot of other residents feel the same. It's not just about them, their location. It's about the effects that it has on our community. Thank you.
Patrick Cartwright.
Good evening, everybody. Patrick Cartwright, twenty-one forty-five Southbauer Street. I had some, some interactions with Jake and with the other Board of Spirit and BMD, and I just felt I needed to come forth and give full transparency of what I have done in the last couple of days. We was having some issues with communications and stuff, so I went ahead and I registered a five oh four. And then we made that BMD or Kart Racing Association Incorporated. I acquired insurance this morning, and then I went ahead and I submitted the accord form and a permit into the city. And I just wanted full disclosure on this, so everybody didn't get surprised that there's another standalone that's happening at this time. So with that being said, I know Jake was, was gonna give a presentation tonight, I think. So I just wanted to put clarity out there so nobody got blindsided. And then it will revert back to BMD as soon as the new boards put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Johanna Zee.
Thank you. I'm Johanna Zee. I live within the city, Ward Four. So someone just gave me this article about an hour ago, I believe. And I, it's just pretty disturbing because as you know, last December, I put in a formal grievance about the procedure and processes of meetings and and it escalated to a complaint with the Oregon Ethics Commission. So it was very surprising when I read this that felt like a decision had already been made. Now, this isn't an executive session, but it's an article. I don't know if you guys have read it. And the Beeper Show this morning indicating having the sense that it's already a done deal. You guys are moving them out to Saint, with Saint Benny's out there. And my understanding at the last meeting was that this was still up for discussion, that you okayed the city staff to have that discussion, to start the conversation about that with public input. So this is what it says. That's why city manager, Mike Sauerwine, and this is not personal, you know, says they're closing three shelters to open a one-stop shelter with staff to help the homeless overcome obstacles to housing. What we've decided to do is to work with Saint Vincent de Paul to develop a business plan that we will use to transition from the two shelters that are unstaffed currently to a new shelter and then close the, the two unstaffed shelters. So this is what we call preemptive conditioning. Right? You put it out there as if it's a done deal, and people just assume, well, it's a done deal, and the decision hasn't really even formally been made. It's not part of your management plan, which the staff could actually just implement because it was already decided and approved by you guys. But the fact that this veers from that, it's something you have to make a decision on. And then when you put this in the media as if it's already a done deal, it doesn't leave the public much room for input and discussion on this. I was very disturbed with the May eighteenth work session. It did not feel like, you know, writing your opinions or thoughts or questions on, on comment cards isn't really a true meeting where we come together, which was the initial intention of Counselor Merritt to do. It felt like a canned meeting. It felt like, oh, here we go again. This is, you guys already decided what you're going to do, and you're presenting it to us in a way that has a pretty package. And, and that was kind of upsetting because it's a lot of the same things that we're doing. This morning, I heard you mention the number eighty people that are gonna be moved out there. Three weeks ago, the number was sixty people that would be moved out there. What happens when those eighty people, you know, people come from other communities, and rightfully so, it's a beautiful town, and you've got all these, you know, amenities for them. What happens when we get twenty more people who need space? We have to then build a bigger shelter and bigger shelter. And I don't think that this, this program is really sustainable for our community. So I'm just inviting you to really take a hard look on it and to actually have communication with the community about this plan because I do see a lot of negatives with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Action items on the agenda. Mr. Kausch.
Yes, I was gonna speak to the LERTD that your, the staff report will be presenting. Low-income rental housing tax exemption. As you know, going back to when we first started the Cottage Village, there wasn't a LERTD, and we were granted only a different kind of status. And so Square One would like to work with the city again. It'd like to be another rural pilot project with something similar to their Peace Village. This would be a shared equity co-op, housing co-op, and people would be able to enter into that with five thousand dollars and then continue some monthly fees depending on the size of the units, which is actually a form of ownership. And I think that LERTD is gonna be a very useful tool in encouraging that to happen. And I would encourage the city council to continue working to complete that and for staff to continue refining the, the LERTD so that it will fit our community and be able to provide the kind of low-income housing that's also required in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into our public hearing. This evening, there is a public hearing for the city-proposed supplemental budget. These proceedings are recorded. I will now open the public hearing at seven fourteen PM. This public hearing will be held for the purpose of taking comments on city-proposed supplemental budget. We will now have the staff report for, from the finance director, Ms. Lichens.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. The proposed supplemental budget is to fund the purchase of property located along Cleveland Street Cottage Grove in the amount of two million nine hundred thousand dollars and to appropriate funds to service debt associated with the bond issuance. A public hearing is required before the city council, as it will be creating more than ten percent of the general fund total appropriations. It's an increase of more than that, excuse me. And a new property purchase line item in the general fund, community development department, is being created. We did advertise as required by Oregon budget law, and it's the staff's recommendation told the public hearing to consider the comments offered during the public hearing.
We will now take public testimony for all persons testifying. Please state your name and address for the record. I see none. Are there any questions from the council?
Yeah, my name's Art Lancaster, Ward Two. We're buying another piece of property? Is that what was just said? Is that what was just said? We're wanting to buy another piece of property? We've already got properties that
City manager, do you wanna take that?
No, we're not in fact buying another piece of property. What this is doing is recognizing that when the budget was adopted a year ago, the city had not made the decision at that time to purchase the property and then turn around and sell it for industrial and residential development. So what this is doing is recognizing that that took place during the calendar, during the fiscal year, but was not discussed at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes more sense because it wasn't making any sense what I heard. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question. Are there any questions from the council? I now will close the public hearing at seven sixteen. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Resolutions and ordinances. Item A. Resolution adopting supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and making appropriations. Staff report by Ms. Lichens.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing before the council was just held this evening to receive comments. ORS two ninety-four point four seventy-one permits the governing body to create a supplemental budget for the fiscal year in which the regular budget has been adopted for certain specific reasons. A budget hearing was conducted at the proposed budget. As the proposed budget changes, creates new line items that are greater than ten percent of the general fund total appropriations. The supplemental budget is necessary at this time to appropriate funds for Project Sparrow, including the property purchase and payment of associated debt not anticipated at the time the original budget was prepared. After consideration of public comment, make any necessary adjustments and adopt the resolution.
Resolution number
Resolution number two one three seven.
Counselor Fleck.
Madam Mayor, move that the council adopt resolution twenty-one thirty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion with the second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Drier.
Aye.
Counselor Merritt.
Aye.
Counselor Stennett.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Mayor Solzby.
Aye. Unanimous. Item B. Resolution recognizing revenue for the city of Cottage Grove for the Department of Environmental Quality Clean Water State Revolving Fund for a partially forgivable loan for the completion of an updated stormwater drainage and treatment master plan. Staff report by Public Works, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, council. On November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, city council approved resolution twenty-one twenty-one, supporting the submittal of a planning loan application for three hundred thousand to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for the purpose of completing and, and updating the two thousand and twenty-four Stormwater Drainage and Treatment Master Plan. The Oregon Department of Environmental Quality has notified the city the application has been approved. City staff is working with the DEQ staff for Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund to send them all the necessary documents needed to prepare the loan. The Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund Program is requesting a resolution recognizing the proceeds for the Stormwater Drainage Master Plan. This loan is eligible for a hundred thousand dollars of debt forgiveness. The total amount of loan will be two hundred thousand. Would also add that the interest rate for this loan is point zero eight percent. And during the agenda work session, the question was raised if there was the ability to potentially get more debt forgiveness. We've inquired on that, and due to the large number of applications that were submitted and awarded that there was not, they're not able to give any more debt forgiveness this round. So hopefully in the future, maybe. So the recommendation is that the city council adopt the attached draft resolution recognizing revenue for the city's planning loan application from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality Clean Water State Revolving Fund to provide funds to update the city of Cottage Grove's two thousand and twenty-four Stormwater Drainage and Treatment Master Plan.
Counselor Fleck.
Madam Mayor, move that the council adopt resolution twenty-one thirty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion with the second. Will the, any? Discussion. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Stennett.
Aye.
Counselor Merritt.
Aye.
Counselor Drier.
Aye.
Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Mayor Solzby.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Item C. First vote for the ordinance amending the Cottage Grove Municipal Code by adding Chapter three point one one regarding the establishment of a low-income rental housing property tax exemption program. Staff report by the city planner, Mr. Mongan.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. The low-income rental housing property tax exemption program, or LERTD program, was proposed as a recommended mechanism for creating regulated affordable housing along within the city of Cottage Grove by the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. The Affordable Housing Implementation Plan and its recommendations were adopted by council on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The program, as recommended by the AHEP, closely follows the requirements of ORS three zero seven point five one five through three zero seven point five two three, the state enabling legislation for LERTD. If this ordinance is adopted, staff will request resolutions of support from our partner taxing districts in July, two thousand and twenty-four. The LERTD program would become effective upon receipt of written supports from sufficient number of taxing jurisdictions whose combined levying authority exceeds fifty-one percent. It is now appropriate that council consider the proposed ordinance. However, due to some changes that popped up at Friday morning's agenda session, some questions were asked. I'll go over those now. One of the questions, excuse me, had to do with the date of pre-application versus the date of submittal. There appeared to be a little bit of a, a mix-up in those dates. I reviewed it with the city attorney, and it turns out one of our placeholders was just left in there inadvertently. Staff is proposing that instead of having to have your pre-application conference completed by December thirty-first, even though your application is due the next day, that you turn it in by November first, or have that pre-application conference on November first. Other items that were pointed out in the definitions of, or Counselor Drier pointed out some questions about the definition, in the definition section for low income. This language comes straight out of the statute, and it has to do with the percentage of AMI that, or the income level of the applicants, or what, what the rents need to be set at. So the statute allows for a couple of different paths. The one, the first path is, is that initially, you, the first year, the rents have to be at sixty percent, but subsequent years, it can go up to eighty percent. That just allows for a little bit of, I, I'm not really sure why, but I would assume it has to do with just some debt recovery. But then it holds at eighty percent for the remainder. If the applicant has received other benefits, federal low-income housing tax credits, that has a different metric for the first year. So if federal statute says it can be at eighty percent, the LERTD requires it to be at sixty, just as though with, if they didn't have that credit. Also, Counselor Drier pointed out an accidental copy paste error in the recitals on the front page of the ordinance. Clean that up. They were just left in there, unfortunately, some language. All that being said, with the change of December thirty-first to November first, staff is recommending that council hold the first vote this evening, then we'll bring it back for a second vote at subsequent meeting.
Ms. Roberts, do we have an ordinance number?
Ordinance number three one eight five.
Any questions? Counselor Fleck.
Would you like a motion first or a question? So I'll move that ordinance three one eight five be adopted.
Second.
You have a motion with the second. Any questions?
Yes, thank you. So the only other question that I had in this was the nineteen ninety date as far as the the property, the building needed to be newer than that. Is that something that if there was an applicant in the future that was in nineteen eighty-nine, is that something that could be changed in the ordinance in the future that would impact going, going forward?
Mayor, Counselor Fleck, yes. So this is, this is subjective or a local number, if you will. So if council had an applicant come in and say, hey, I'm, I'm just one year away, X, Y, Z, would you consider amending the ordinance to allow this? Yes.
Yeah, and I totally get the idea of having a date because I mean, we wanna avoid asbestos and, and lead paint. And so, I mean, I totally get the date. I just wanted to make sure that we're not being more restrictive than necessary. So I totally support this ordinance.
Counselor Merritt.
I as well have been long anticipating and waiting for this move by the council, and I want to offer my support, but I also want to emphasize or document the fourth whereas and the fifth whereas the fact that we have fallen so far behind on affordable housing. We've supported three MPTs, and one of those actually advertised themselves as luxury apartments and is well above the means of many of our citizens. Let us not forget our seniors on fixed incomes, our working families, people experiencing disabilities, both medical and physical and mental. This is a huge need. I, I wanna, I can't remember the exact date of the housing study. Was that two eighteen? That pointed out the, the huge chasm of need for affordable housing. So just want this, as we particularly deliberate on Project Sparrow, that we not whittle away this huge need for affordable housing, and that was one of our primary selling points and focal points in moving ahead on that project. So with that.
Counselor Drier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think that housing and homelessness are the defining issues of our time. And I'm glad that we are taking this step for a LERTD. It's one of the tools that we can have in our toolkit as far as policymakers, that we can try to incentivize additional opportunities for housing for folks. And while I'm talk, while housing and homelessness go hand in hand, I wanna thank the folks who came here to give public comment about the real impacts that it's having in our community because it's good for us to hear. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Savage.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor Stennett.
Aye.
Counselor Merritt.
Aye.
Counselor Drier.
Aye.
Mayor Solzby.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Business from the city council. Item A. Cancellation of July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting. Staff report by Mr. Sauerwine.
Well, good evening again, Your Honor, members of the council. As we've discussed, the Ucheen Symphony will be playing that evening, and so in order the city council can attend the symphony, staff is recommending that we cancel the council meeting.
Counselor Fleck.
Madam Mayor, move that the council cancel the July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
Second.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous. Item B, Bohemia Mining Days update staff report by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Boone.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Mayor and Council. So this will be a quick little update of what I know so far, which is not by any means everything there is to know. So as you are, I'm sure aware, Bohemia Mining Days Incorporated announced a while back that they were going to cancel this year's Bohemia Mining Days. And that remains the case. The official Bohemia Mining Days has been canceled. However, a group calling themselves Spirit of BMD is busily working to create a sort of replacement for BMD for this year as kind of a one off thing waiting for, I guess, quote unquote, proper BMD to return. And so they have been busily getting folks together, planning out what they're going to do. So it looks like they're probably going to have a pretty full schedule of things going on in the park on the traditional third weekend in July of Bohemia Mining Days. So we, it looks like we will have a, a summer festival in Cottage Grove that while legally distinct from BMD, will feel something like BMD. There's still a lot of stuff to do with, you know, special event permits and things like that, but the city intends to support this, this event in kind of just like it would, you know, like it did in previous years with Bohemia Mining Days proper.
Any questions? We appreciate the effort. Thank you. Item C, concerns from council. Counselor Fleck.
Well, I will also ditto that. Thank you for the folks stepping up, you know, to try to provide something of a BMD festival. It's, you know, something that I've gone to most every year since my wife and I moved here full time in eighty nine and and it's been in many locations. In fact, I remember it was at the, the Chamber site for a few years and missed the rubble and so it's had, it's had its ups and downs over the years. I mean, we've had it where they tried to have it out in the county, but apparently didn't check on their permits and it wasn't allowed. And so at the last minute had to come in. And so I'm really hopeful that our community can step up and revive, you know, this long time festival. And I really want to commend the folks that are doing that. You know, as far as the making a decision goes, you know, we have not made any decision. In fact, I have a thousand questions before we get anywhere close to making a decision about the what, where and how about homelessness. And, and I totally get the frustration. I'm assuming the lady who showed the video did call the police because, you know, that is illegal. We have a noise ordinance at ten o'clock. Thank you so much. You know, and I've said all along that everybody should be held to the same standard. In fact, the, you know, the mess out there, I, I've made comments over the years that if that were in front of my house, I would have a nuisance, you know, action, you know, taken against me. And so I, I know this has been very tough for our town and I think it's been very tough for a lot of towns. This is something cities have not historically had to deal with. And unfortunately, because of, you know, Martin versus Boise and House Bill thirty one fifteen, it now lies on our shoulders. And, and of course, after the Supreme Court takes up grants pass, the question will be, does it change or not? My guess is because of the state legislative action that it won't, that we're still going to be saddled with having to do something. You know, that being said, oh, my gosh, I was so excited with what staff and Saint Vincent de Paul were, were suggesting. You know, this was the first ray of sunshine that we've seen, you know, since, since this all got placed on our shoulders and, and you know, is a perfect no. At our agency, we're seeing folks facing eviction all the time. Rents are going up. Folks are not able to afford their housing and this is a huge challenge, one that our LRTD, as mentioned earlier, is going to try to address. Our MPT certainly has already made some impact as far as getting housing. You know, and we're, this is going to be a long, long trudge. There's going to be a long process trying to get us out of this. We've not built enough housing for years. I will say for those in Salem, if they're paying attention to our little burg, we need to address Senate Bill one hundred. For years, we decided we didn't want to, you know, sprawl like California did. And I get that on one level. On the other, we've also not grown like we needed to, to adapt to a growing population. So while I would never throw out our land use policies, I do think there needs to be some compromise in allowing cities the ability to expand. Our planner will tell you my frustration over the years with the annexation process. You know, it's, it's, it's so convoluted. We have, I'm trying to remember, is that thirty seven or thirty nine percent of our available land supply is, is constrained or partially constrained. And it's like, so there might be a house in the middle of a half acre lot. And they're saying that that could be developed. Well, you and I both know that'll never be developed. And so this is ridiculous. It's absurd and it's very frustrating to me. You know, that some of our laws tie our hands, as does House Bill thirty one fifteen. You know, I, I've said before, I think that we need both incentive and disincentive for folks. We need to provide an opportunity for a hand up, but we also need to have ramifications for bad behaviors. And I totally get that. Unfortunately, we're a little stuck. We have to provide a space for folks, period. And, and, you know, the, there's no legal answer to combat that. You know, so anyway, I will stop there, but just to say that one, there's not been any decision made. Two, that I am super excited. I want to thank staff for the work and Saint Vincent de Paul. At a time when we're cutting our city budget like crazy, they're proposing doing this all on their own dime. Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much. So while no decision's been made, am I excited? You bet. That's like I said, a light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Business from the city manager. We'll do the request to, request to negotiate the approved sale price of real property.
Good. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So at the May thirteenth meeting, council approved resolution twenty one thirty six designating lot fourteen of the Cottage Grove Industrial Park as surplus and agreed to sell the parcel to Ernie Olson for the amount of six hundred and thirty two thousand, one hundred and sixty four dollars and fifty cents or two twenty five a square foot. Mr. Olson has completed his due diligence and at this time is requesting revised sales price of two dollars a square foot or five hundred and sixty one thousand, nine hundred and twenty four dollars even. He is making this request due to the presence of the wetlands on the property. As shown on the attached map exhibit, there's approximately a half an acre of wetland on the subject property with the setback areas. Included in that almost becomes an acre of the total six point four five acres. Thus, we're built significantly, or at least partially reducing the outright buildable area of the lot. Should council or recommendation is council consider the revised offer on lot fourteen? Just for your reference, the difference between the two values is seventy thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents.
Counselor Fleck.
So I'd asked a lot of questions on Friday that I'd like to reiterate here. You know, so basically when a developer builds land, they are obligated to put in the streets and the infrastructure to that property. We however, are putting in our street. And as Director Stewart mentioned, there is public benefit. I mean, this is part of our, you know, transportation plan, which is part of our comprehensive plan. And so something, gosh, I started on the planning commission in two thousand. It's been on longer than that on our comprehensive plan in, in a, you know, potential project. So, you know, I get that there's the benefit to the community, but this property is also benefiting. The other side of this was, you know, should Mr. Olson have done his due diligence about the wetlands on the property? Absolutely. You know, that being said, Director Stewart also sent us some information of the costs of mitigating wetlands. And so I, I, I also kind of have feelings that maybe this is not the best of deals. I, I'm really conflicted on this. I do believe that the other lots, I believe, were going for twice. Was it four dollars a square foot, Mr. Stewart, that we're?
We haven't listed, Mayor, Counselor Fleck, we haven't listed for that, but we haven't received any offers. So we're not sure.
So we're already, you know, half of what we're listing the other properties. You know, the sad reality for me is though, who is somebody that's going to want to mitigate wetlands? So I'm going to reluctantly support this request. I, I, I believe that the overall need for us to pay debt on the industrial park outweighs some of the, the other factors in this. Like I said, I took all weekend long to think about this and, and certainly there are pros and cons to this, but I am going to support it.
Counselor Drier.
Thank you, Mayor. I, this person made the, they, they approached the city and made an offer. So I assumed they had already done their due diligence because they approached us. So now it just seems like they're like, I, I would have assumed they already did their due diligence and we are paying for other elements around the property. So I don't really support this.
Anyone else? Counselor Merity.
Could someone remind me of the total acre of the acreage of the lot originally?
Oh, Mayor, Counsel Merity, originally as in before our street or?
The, the one that we, the acreage that was being negotiated.
Six point four or five acres.
So essentially they, we've lost, lost an acre of usable land. So seventy thousand dollars. Let's see, an acres forty three, five, six hundred. So square footage, trying to figure out the actual, is it still the same price for the, for the usable lands?
If, so the, there was mention of the other lots in the subdivision being listed at, at four dollars a square foot. That's netting out the wetlands. So if the same math was used on this, it would actually be a hundred and eleven thousand dollar difference. Basically, so at the two twenty five a foot, by him only reducing his per foot value by twenty five cents, it, it's kind of in between both.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mongan or, or Mr. Stewart, can you remind the council how long we have these listed?
Mayor, I believe, well, since twenty nineteen. The city purchased the property in twenty nineteen. We were engaged with a potential developer, I, I believe for almost two years, waiting for that to come to fruition. Eventually that person was, wasn't going to get there. And so we began actively making it known that the parcels were available. Right within a day of Mr. Olson's offer, that's when the other lots were listed. This lot was originally slated to be listed with the other lots and the other three lots in the subdivision, but we pulled it out due to his offer. And if I may, for Counsel Drier, Mister, the wetlands information isn't necessarily readily available. It was something that he requested after he turned in his, his offer. Whether or not that's good business practice, you know, I think your point is very sound, but I would just say it's not like you can just turn on a map and it'll show where the wetlands are for this parcel. It's actually information that had to be requested from the city.
Counselor Fleck.
And a mayor move that the council accept the revised offer price, two dollars a square foot or five hundred and sixty one thousand, nine hundred and twenty four dollars for lot fourteen and the first addition of the Cottage Grove Industrial Park.
We have a second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Six to seven. Six to one. All right. Oh, sorry, five, five to one. We're missing Mr. Urban. All right. Business from the city manager.
Well, good evening again, your honor, members of the council. As we discussed on Friday, we're going to be starting to provide the city council with mid-year and end of the year updates for each city department. These updates will include a description of the department's day to day activities, you know, kind of the special projects they've been working on, any kind of major accomplishments. And any, and these updates will be about ten, fifteen minutes. We'll start them at the July eighth city council meeting. At the July eighth meeting, we'll be having the police, library, community development, public works. And then at the August twelfth council meeting, we'll be having human resources, community services in the community center and finance in the golf course, which is kind of an odd combination, but our finance department does oversee the golf course. And all this, this doesn't directly impact the city council. We're also going to be starting to have quarterly city staff meetings. So all staff members have an opportunity to find out what's going on in different departments. And everybody can be conversant in what other departments are working on. Also at our July eighth meeting, Saint Vincent de Paul is scheduled to present their business plan. And let me be really clear about this. The only direction that city staff has received from the city council is to work with Saint Vincent de Paul to develop a business plan. Nothing has been decided. Nothing has been approved. You don't even have a plan in front of you at this point to approve. We certainly plan to take public input and give the public the opportunity to communicate and participate in the process. And if I have inadvertently muddied the waters, I apologize for that. But the direction that I think city staff receive from the council has been very clear. And that is the direction that city staff will be proceeding with. We also at the July eight city council meeting, we'll be having the city managers' six month evaluation. And as we discussed on Friday, I'd like to schedule a time with each of you between now and then to discuss what has been my goals and priorities for the first six months on the job and talk about future goals and priorities as we're moving forward. We'll also be sending out to the council as requested on Friday, an evaluation form, so you can put your comments in writing as well. And finally, this was suggested at the, at a past council meeting that we have one regular city council meeting a month and a second city council meeting that's geared more toward a work session to one topic. Now, as a practical matter, at that second meeting, we're probably still going to have to have some public hearings because of meeting notice requirements and dates. And we'll probably also have a consent agenda items that we're going to need to deal with, just so that we're able to officially do our business. But it would be my suggestion that starting with the September council meetings, the September ninth meeting be a regular city council meeting. And then the September twenty third meeting be a work session and that that work session be dedicated to law enforcement. And that perhaps we continue this schedule for maybe, you know, three, four months to the end of the year. See if it's working for us and if it's something we want to go forward with. So what do you guys think? That's my suggestion for, you know, the last couple of, of months of this year.
I'm in support.
That would conclude my report, your honor.
All right. Well, this has been a short meeting tonight. So with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn.